One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for fallen members of our first responder and military communities. Thank you.
All right, we'll begin by a review of the agenda and approving the minutes of previous meetings and any requested public comment on non-agenda items. I also want to remind everyone that has posted on the door of this meeting room that the psych board meetings are recorded and when things are working right, broadcast live on North TV, which I believe they are working right. So, thank you, North TV, for that. We've got a couple of announcements that Ms. Noble will take us through. We've got a public hearing for early vote by mail. We have a proclamation, which we'll be reading at the end of the meeting. We also have a discussion on early voting in person. We have a special permit application for the Plainville Athletic League to discuss. We have the approval and execution of a mitigation agreement for a billboard that's coming to town. Disclosure of appearances of conflict of interest for the FinCom to discuss. We have a request to review a current sewer auditorium. We've got vacancies for boards and committees to discuss and an insurance update. With that, entertain a motion.
I move that the select board vote to accept the consent agenda as presented and approve the minutes of the January 27, 2025 regular meeting as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Mr. Noble, announcements?
Thank you. I'll start with the easy ones. So, we're actually, these are all town clerks, so I'm going to call in the town clerk for the announcements, except, of course, that dog licenses are due back by February 27th, and if you don't get your dog license back in, you'll be operating without a license.
Oh, boy.
Neve?
Just a quick reminder to please ask residents to return their annual street listing, which was mailed out in January. It's very important that we receive those back in a timely fashion. And also that nomination papers are due back no later than this Friday, February 14. We'll be here all week this week, and then I'll be here from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Friday to accept nomination papers for anyone that can't make it back in by then. So, if you've already pulled papers and haven't returned them yet, please do get them back. If you're still interested in a position with the town, there's still time. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I have, that's it, that's all my announcements today.
All right. With that, we will hold off on opening the public hearing for just a moment, and we'll move to annual town election, early voting, oh, sorry. Which one did you want to do first?
In person.
In person, okay.
In person.
So, voting in person.
Go right ahead.
At a meeting of the Board of Registars held at the Town Hall on January 16, 2025 at 2:00 p.m., it was officially voted to recommend that the town of Plainville offer early voting in person for the annual town election to be held on April 7, 2025. A voter registration session will be held on March 28, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Town Hall. This is in accordance with the state law that says you have to have registration of voters 10 days before an election. The early voting hours, the early voting in person hours will be Monday, March 31st, 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Tuesday, April 1st, 8:00, 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Wednesday, April 2nd, 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And Thursday, April 3rd, 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m.
So, according to the Votes Act of 2020, early voting in person for local elections is not required. To have early voting in person, at least 50% of the Board of Registars must make that recommendation, of which we had a unanimous vote to offer early voting in person. The thought is that we can handle that from my office with a booth set up in the lobby. So, anybody that can't make it on Election Day would have four additional days to come in to vote early in person if they so desire. And the final step in that is that the select board would need to vote to opt in to the recommendation of the Board of Registars. So, that's what we're doing here tonight, please.
Have we had any problems with early voting in person in the past? Any issues come up?
None. The only problem is a lack of attendance for it at some elections. It was very popular in November, as you can imagine, for the presidential and state election. The September primary, it was a waste of time. But this will be no additional staff, no cost, no additional cost to the town, because we'll run it with my office personnel, and I think that we'll be absolutely fine with that.
Thank you.
You need a motion for us?
Yep, so I move that the select board approve the recommendation of the Board of Registars and offer early in-person voting, as stated.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and now we should open up the public hearing, so we can move to the next agenda item.
I move that the board open the public hearing at 6:36 p.m. to discuss the merits of vote by mail for the annual town election scheduled for Monday, April 7th, as directed below. State law allows cities and towns to opt out of no excuse early voting by mail in local elections. A city or town can only opt out of vote by mail for a local election after the city council or select board holds a public hearing and takes a recorded vote to do so at least 45 days before the election. If your community opts out of vote by mail for your local election, a vote by mail application will not be valid for that election. Absentee ballots would still be available.
I'll second that motion.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, this is the public hearing?
Okay.
This opens, okay. So, we opted out of vote by mail for last year's annual town election. The reasons were very different. Last year, the state sent out over 3 million postcards to the citizens of Massachusetts offering early vote by mail for all elections. We had a March primary last year prior to our April town election. So, we did have quite a few people, I believe it was about 1,400 people, request to vote at that point in time for all elections to vote by mail. Quite frankly, we weren't sure that they knew by selecting all, well, by selecting all, they weren't necessarily requesting the annual town elections. There was a lot of ambiguity there as to whether they really meant to receive a ballot for that election or not. Due to the postage costs and the administrative costs and the timing last year where the elections were so close together, April 1st and March 5th, the elections were very close together, we opted out. I did not really hear any complaints from people. We did send a letter to people to let them know that we weren't offering early vote by mail, and we published it on the website and some other places. So, I think it was made clear last year that if you had opted in on a postcard from the state, it did not include a local election. This year, there are no postcards from the state. I only have two absentee ballot applications so far for all elections this year, of which there's only one planned at this point in time. However, if we're not going to offer vote by mail, you do have to opt out. So, I thought it was worth having a public hearing to see what the board desired and what the residents desired in that manner. I do think it would be much more manageable, but I do not recommend that we send out an application to every resident, because that would be very costly.
Any comments by the board?
Yeah, I think we made a wise decision a year ago, based on the ambiguity of the state's postcard and expectations of our voters and the incumbent costs and effort. I see no need to go above and beyond too far here, since we already do offer absentee ballots with valid reasons. I don't mind offering it if it's okay, you know, if that's okay with you, but I don't see any need to send cards out for it. Can we do it in that, by request only? And has that become an administrative headache for you?
Not the issue.
If we already have the absentee voting, what's the additional benefit, just that you don't have to come here in person?
So, the absentee voting is a constitutional right, and it is for valid reasons only. Early voting in person now has a no excuse necessary. So, we have, it is confusing to everybody, including clerks, but we have an absentee ballot application that you can get if you are definitely going to be out of your state and not able to vote, if you have a disability that prevents you from going to the polls, and if you're in the military or something, you can't physically be present. And then the early vote by mail is for anyone, no excuse necessary. You don't have to choose a box as to why, you just don't want to come on Election Day or you're unable to come on Election Day. So, those are the differences. But the Board of Registars, Grace, correct me if I'm wrong, we felt that by offering the early voting in person, that would give people an additional four days to come vote in person, and then, of course, they always will have the absentee ballot, like Chairman Johnson.
In my opinion, I think it's probably not necessary, especially with the, I don't know, 35 additional hours that are being offered. I don't know if that's right, but that's my opinion. I don't think it's necessary. I don't think it's, I think everyone has ample opportunity to come and vote anytime that week or that day, and if you're really not going to be around, then get an absentee ballot.
This is a public hearing, so if there are no other comments?
Good.
Okay, so if you've got any comments you'd like to make, just come right up to the center podium and let us know your name and address and make any comments you'd like or ask any questions you'd like.
Really move the crowd.
I move that the select board vote to opt out of no excuse early voting by mail in local elections.
Before I second that, do we have to define the year where we take this annually?
It's an annual vote, so that would be implied, I believe, for this year, because you can't vote out next year.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Does it need to be a roll call vote?
Oh, yes.
Kelly, aye.
Clark, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to close the public hearing, please?
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing at 6:42 p.m.
I'll second the motion.
Kelly, aye.
Clark, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Thank you very much.
We'll get over it.
Right. Right.
I forgot we were in public hearing.
All right, if we could invite our friends to the PAL up to the front microphone. Next item is approval of special events permit application for the Plainville Athletic League Opening Day Parade. Event date, April 26, 2025. Rain date, April 27, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. Beginning at Telford Park, proceeding up School Street to Everett Skinner Road to the Plainville Athletic League. How are you? Evening, Mr. Noble. Anything you'd like to add to this?
It's our usual annual parade. We did get some comments back from the department heads that were in your package.
Yep.
The more important one is from the Board of Health, they didn't see any food served, but it will need a permit if you serve. Park Department had no particular problem, except requested, the PAL requested to do this opening day parade and sends me the dates every year. This is from John Tyner. Heads up the spring soccer schedules, push back the recreational spring soccer times to 11:00 a.m. that day. That's an accommodation for you. The building department wants to make sure there are no tents or structures. I don't think you mentioned any in your application, so don't have any problem with them. Fire Department gave the green light entirely. The police department is concerned about the number of street closing. It requires 13 officers to manage the street closings, cross streets, and provide lead and tail vehicles. Although this arrangement does not align with best practices, which would ideally place officers at each entrance along the route, it should be sufficient, given the size of the march. This deployment aims to ensure safety and traffic control throughout the event while accommodating resource limitations. So, I believe that the police department has been in communication with you about some possible changes, but I believe that the police department has extended that they will cooperate, whatever your decision is. I see Chief Floyd is here with us at the moment, so.
If you have any comments, Chief, come on up.
So, the PAL has always been a fantastic organization. We still want to continue. Mike and I spoke for length the other day, just to bring our dollars further and be more fiscally responsible when it comes to events like this. What I did suggest to Mike is potentially have it start from the Field of Dreams. Staging is a lot larger, parking is much more larger, and then the to-from the facility is, makes things so much easier, because the biggest issue we have is, although a very small parade, people dropping their car off at the PAL, walking back, and vice versa. It just makes things really kind of tough to get people to and from in such a short period of time. So, through succession, we figured, I suggested to Mike that if he would consider this year to run the event in that smaller area, kind of condense it, make it look a little bit larger, I have no problem even shutting the streets off for a longer period of time before people do set up, enjoy that particular area a little bit better than they would if we had the mile and a half versus a half-mile section. So, the parade route theoretically would leave the Field of Dreams, take a left, come to Everett Skinner, take a left, and then end at the PAL. Again, much shorter route, but again, it allows parents, grandparents, and other people to walk with the kids, which previously we've had issues with, even the kids making it up the hill, never mind the older folks.
That sums up our conversation. Ultimately, yes, the hill is part of the entertainment value as well, to see the little kids try to make it up, and then see how the parents have to carry the kids after that. But I think, we had a great conversation, and we're in agreement, I think, to see how that goes this year, based off of Field of Dreams down. If that goes great, that can kind of be maybe the new norm. If it doesn't, then we will revisit in plenty of time next year to be able to go back maybe to the old or try to revisit that, but we're in agreement to go from that. I think, like I said, we talked on Thursday, Friday, to be able to, I think, it's worth giving it a shot, try to, for the best for everyone.
And the PAL board has discussed that as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not that much of a loose cannon.
Just make a trip from the Heptor version, okay. All right, any questions or comments from the board?
I did, I'm sorry, one other thing, just going back to what Brian was saying, we did talk to Deb, Board of Health, and the other reason we don't have a food permit is, as we try to figure out what we will be able to do on-site, whether with water or not water. So, we're kind of on pause there, but she knows that's why we don't have a food permit yet, because ideally, we'd like to do it in-house, and we'd like to be able to do it in the kitchen, but we're trying to figure that piece out, where the timing will align, as well as John Tyner, yeah, every year. Every year, we reach out to him and kind of make sure the bullet programs can work, so we want the kids to be able to participate in both.
Yep. Thank you.
So, to your point on that, Mr. Noble, I saw a TV show the other day where you had mentioned publicly that we would have the water line set up by opening day. I was wondering.
Prior to.
No pressure.
Prior to opening day.
No pressure.
Now, I just wonder, I know that there's a lot of things that have to come together, but in terms of how things would have to stage and the timing for Department of Health to go through and get them what they need to, you know, to serve on the day of the parade, what are your thoughts?
Well, obviously, the Board of Health Department will be very accommodating. It is a thrill, PAL, to do what they can. I think it's a gamble, depending upon the install of the water line. So, I think you should be prepared to go in both directions at the same time.
All right, well, we'll play it by ear, I think, a little bit, but I think as that project progresses, then when we get to a certain point, we should revisit this discussion, either, you know, publicly or just between the three of us to make sure that we get those things lined up.
We've been very, very much communication with Deb to ensure Deb can go through, to make sure everything they need, we've already had them come through as a preliminary, so the work that we're doing in there to upgrade the kitchen to their standards are, she's on board with what we're doing, we're going to have an inspection after all the equipment's in. Problem is, we can't do the cleaning piece of it, because we don't have water to clean dishes, but we'll, we will be ready.
Any other comments? Yeah?
Just, I mean, it's always a fun event, and thank you for doing it every year. I know it's a lot of work. That seems like a very, very short route. You know, of course, it's your, you know, your decision, however you want to do it. If I'm sitting here, I'm like, wow, that's a really short route, and, you know, I kind of hate to see the tradition die of that, you know, I don't know, every year, but do what you think is best.
The tradition's not dying.
Okay. Changing, okay.
So, that is where we want to do the best for the town, we want to do the best for the organization, we want to do the best for the kids.
Yep.
And if it means we're going to pivot and do some things a little bit differently and look at different avenues, that's now what we need to focus.
Appreciate that.
And again, it's the, knowing it's not the new norm, it could be the new norm, but that's the honest conversation that we had was, we'll try it, we'll see how it goes, we'll make the best of it.
Yep.
And if we can make it to be what it was, then that becomes it. If not, then go back.
Yeah, your decision, you know, whatever you think is best.
Even in conversations, even the pre-staging area, looking at, potentially looking at pot of AMV, and then coming out on AMV and making the route longer, again, it's going to really be dependent, and again, Mike and I kind of in conversation even last year, it's like, we think, Mike, and it was like almost every other hour we were talking, if we're going to have the event last year just because of the rain. But similar conversations with number of kids that are going to be participating, weather and other stuff, that route may be able to get extended a little bit, just seeing where things are. It's just, those cross streets are really, really tough to navigate with a single officer. It's just, I don't want to set up a disaster.
Go ahead.
What, how many years has this been running, out of curiosity? Do you know?
It's been around since 1955.
1955, so 75 years, something like that?
Seventy-eighth year this year.
Seventies, that's, that's pretty impressive.
Well, I want to make sure we have a rain, like, rain date, because last year, we canceled, and it just never gave permission, which, less than ideal. So, I want to make sure, seventy days a year, I want to make sure that we're going.
One more question. Just, I can't find it, John's comments about starting at 11:00 a.m., was that assuming the town park start?
Yes.
So, has anyone checked with John for the schedule of the Field of Dreams?
It's not as much the town park start, it's to ensure the kids vote.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
So, we always, we always do the Saturday morning schedules for the instructional level.
Yep.
Also, it's never mind parade day, but we try to do it around soccer as well.
But someone's talked to John about this, because, I mean, he does rent the Field of Dreams.
They've been coordinating, and he has sent a message to you that said he's cool.
With the Field of Dreams?
Correct.
Okay.
As somebody who walked up that school street hill many, many, many years in this parade, I will say, it saddens me a tiny bit not to be walking by all the homes where people stand, but I understand the concerns, and I think it's great that the two of you talked and are going to try something different, and as much as we love tradition, we have to leave room for tradition to grow and change. So, I wish you well with that. And the other thing that comment I want to make, Mr. Chairman, should I watch the Chat with Chairman TV program? It sounds like there's some good news in there. Is that recently recorded? Is that what you're talking about?
It was just that I was trying to get Mr. Noble to commit to having this water line open in public on time, and I think we got him there, so.
Okay, I didn't know if that was something, something in that program that we didn't announce.
No.
Should announce.
That's something I was wondering if Mr. Noble was prepared to do tonight.
Oh, okay.
But I'm not sure if he is.
No, I'm not.
He's not. He is not. So, that will be, so that'll be tuned into the next segment.
I'd rather surprise you.
Okay, I guess the last comment I would make is, I kind of agree with you both, like, this is a 75-year tradition. I've walked that route, it's kind of a rite of passage for the kids at the PAL, they, you know, and it's just too bad that we're in such a crazy world where the safety is, you know, there are additional threats in this world that are now having to be taken into account, and it's kind of sad. But I'm really glad that the board is willing to give it a shot, and, you know, the chief's recommendation, so we'll see how it goes, and hopefully, people can, like you said, make the best of it and have a great time. Board doesn't have any additional comments, I'll go to the audience. Mr. Wydeck?
Was this financially driven, or was this, was this financially driven? Yes.
Financially driven, I'm fine with either, I have a choice. Mike and I talked about that pretty significantly. It's more about safety of vehicles in intersections that we're dealing with.
So, in other words, you couldn't put the, like North Auburn did, we couldn't put the highway trucks at some of those intersections and block them off? Is that what you were worried about, or?
Yeah, there's 13 intersections, so you would need some either type of equipment to block it off completely, and you'd need an officer there. So, it's 13 intersections, and then multiply that, that's 26 for either side. There's a significant kind of process there. I didn't go through the chair. I apologize.
That's fine. Okay. I don't know why Stan gets to sit in the chair and just yell, but yeah. Thank you for doing it the right way. Show everybody how it's done.
Chris DePrae, 39 High Street. When it comes to this stuff, I mean, obviously, it's everything to the town, but at the same time, part of the planning board, part of trying to make us, you know, do the best job that we can. What we need to understand is that the water and the situations come first, and no matter what, we all try to figure out, that's what we have to take a second seat to. Now, do I want to see this place overgrown? Absolutely not. Do I want to see it good growth? Yes. But I'm telling you, this, what we're shooting for is our community, which means everything, but our community will not decently grow without the water and the stuff, so that's my take.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, with that, entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the special events application for Plainville Athletic League Opening Day Parade. Event date, April 26, 2025. Rain date, April 27, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. Beginning, I mean, do you want to lock them into that? You guys are solid on what you're doing, starting at the Field of Dreams, or is it still in flux? It's, okay, okay, starting at the Field of Dreams, proceeding up School Street to Everett Skinner Road to Plainville Athletic League.
I'll second that motion.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have fun.
Appreciate it.
Good to see you, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Good luck.
All right, next up, we have the approval and execution of mitigation agreement for two-sided monopole billboard.
So, in your package is a mitigation agreement that's worked out between planning and the contractor involved. This is similar to things that we've done in the past, where there are two-sided electronic or single-sided electronic billboards. The planning board has approved this of our Carroll advertising and the placement of the, of the billboard, it just needs the approval of the select board.
Where's that money go?
It actually goes into a fund that's controlled by the planning board for relative expenses, so the planning board has used that money for Graves Engineering, they've also used it, they've contributed it to the building of the pool house, so goes back to the community.
I think often it's been used to mitigate engineering costs for reviews and things, and Graves is one.
Right now, they're using it for Field of Dreams?
The, there's, there's a typo in this agreement that should probably be addressed at the top of the second page, where the phrase "shall be issued by the Plainville Building Department" is duplicated.
"It shall be issued by the Plainville Building Department."
But that said, so.
I'll just run a line.
That said, so you're confirming the planning board did vote this?
They voted it, and they signed it.
Okay, great. I mean, that was, for me, that was the sticking point. There were outstanding special permit issues with that site that need to be resolved, and the fact that the planning board has signed off on this agreement, which requires that those issues be resolved first before building permit for the sign gets granted, I think is significant. I'm satisfied with that clause in there. Once it's fixed.
I'll run a line through that duplicate, so otherwise it'll stay.
Christopher, 39 High Street. Uniquely, this is a very gray area. This has to do with the zoning board of appeals having, like, the ability to say, we can do this, and the planning board to say that we have that. It comes down to language in our, you know, stuff, our bylaws. And when it comes down to the bylaws, basically, we have a very small area in the planning board to be able to govern, and the zoning board of appeal has a larger area, even though the wording says we should be able to do it. It's very weird. But if it's going to you ultimately, what I can see at this particular point, you're able to say yea or nay to it, right, at the end? So I'm assuming it's your call. We have, you know, the ability to have certain, you know, at a certain height, and they have a certain height, and turn certain roads and different things. It's been worked through, but, you know, some people like us, some people don't, and if you want to take a look at it, that's what it is, but it's been gone through, so.
Thank you.
I will say to that point, this has kind of piqued my interest to look at the zoning and see, you know, how billboards are governed, because I don't honestly know.
But I think, you know, Section 3, on the building permit in the mitigation agreement, I think that defines that the planning board will ultimately have the authority to allow execution of the building permit, and once the unresolved issues from special permits that they had granted are resolved, and I think that's significant and important, and I'm happy with that.
I'll make a motion that we approve and execute the mitigation agreement for two-sided monopole billboard.
I'll second that.
Motion and second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up, disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest finance committee member, Mr. Noble.
So Chris Bernice has given us a 268A, disclosure of an appearance of conflict of interest. He sits on the finance committee for the town, and his spouse Kathleen is employed as a teacher at King Philip Regional School District. As you know, the King Philip budget comes for budget review, but under Massachusetts law, he doesn't really have a reject vote. He'll abstain from the vote because his wife works there, but there's no direct conflict, there's the appearance. So he's filing a 268A notice with the appointing authority, which is the board, as there should be, and there's really no problem with it. And it's more to his credit than to the detriment. I'm not even sure it would even rise to a conflict, but he's declaring it, and he's declaring it properly to the select board, so the select board has to vote to accept it. Basically, you're acknowledging that he's filed, this goes to the town clerk.
Okay. He has a folder of these, I assume. I applaud him for identifying even the potential appearance of conflict. I don't think there's any real conflict, but thank you for doing it, Chris.
And we need a vote on that, to accept it?
I'll make a motion to accept the disclosure of an appearance of conflict of interest from the finance committee member, Christopher Bernice.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, we've got the request to review current sewer moratorium, Mallard Lane, May 8th lot 111A.
So the best way to describe that is not about a sewer moratorium. It's a permit request under the hardship clause. As we know, we don't have a moratorium. But we do have a... Because I screwed up.
Record, can you say that?
So the petition is...
Somebody didn't catch him fast enough.
The petitioner is here. Jacob, could you come to the microphone?
Good evening, members. How are we doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
We're doing well, thank you. So tonight, we're going to discuss the moratorium, or, as he said, a hardship. So without further ado, let me get on with the hardship, and I hope you guys consider what I am experiencing and put it into your own personal, if you were to be in my position. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to discuss my challenging situation at Mallard Lane. I am most appreciative to the members tonight. Based on hardship, I am here to respectfully appeal to the board for the release of a sewer tie-in permit at my to-be-built property. To summarize, as I went to obtain the building permit for my property, the town implemented a sewer moratorium literally weeks prior. This unfortunate set of circumstances has left me in an incredibly vulnerable financial situation. Sadly, I have incurred tens of thousands of dollars on engineering costs, real estate taxes, access improvements, legal fees, and interest costs. Plainville is like my second home. My mother grew up in Plainville. I had my aunts, uncles, and cousins. My grandparents lived in Plainville and worked in Plainville for most of their lives. My parents and I intimately work in Plainville as well. We are not only prideful of this great community, but we are dedicated to helping beautify this town. In closing, not only has this brought about financial stress, but there is also an incredible emotional toll caused by the circumstances stemming from the moratorium. I humbly ask the board to consider my plea, as this has caused considerable hardship. I would be incredibly grateful, and I will continue to pray for a positive outcome. Many thanks and sincere gratitude to everyone on the board tonight. Kindly, Jake Smith. Thank you.
Thank you. So we've used the word moratorium quite a bit, and essentially, we don't have a formal moratorium, but we essentially don't have any additional sewer capacity that we are aware of, that we can dole out. We know that we've done some projects in town with the INI to improve sewer capacity. However, until we get through a spring season, we don't really, we can't gauge how much additional availability we've got. So we've heard a couple of these requests already as a board. You know, the ones that we've heard either were in extreme situation or a situation where the person was moving forward and wasn't told, potentially, potentially wasn't told, there was no backup for it, but wasn't told that we had a capacity restriction prior.
Can I interject for a second?
Moving forward, please.
So what you were saying about there was maybe going to be a potential capacity limit, we were never told that, as I recall, when we started doing all the engineering costs and then starting to hopefully get the permit, and then, like I said, prior to getting the permit, they told us that we obviously couldn't because of the potential limit.
Right. Yeah, to me, I think that's the difference in this situation versus others we've seen is...
If you guys maybe say disclosed prior to going through everything that we've already gone through with all the engineering costs and everything, we may have not have pursued this lot, as we wouldn't have put forth the effort and money to...
And what was the date of the permit? Do you have that?
I can't recall. I don't know.
Yeah, I kind of like to understand the time, how this all played out, like, how you, when you acquired the property, when you, like, I don't have a real clear understanding of how we've gotten to this point.
Or the permitting process of the sewer tie-in, or just the whole...
The whole, yeah, the whole...
The whole project.
The whole project.
Yeah, so my grandmother actually had the lot, and she sold it to me.
Okay. And so when was that?
I'd say probably last year, probably in May.
May of '24?
Yeah. Maybe. Don't state me on it, but I think that's when it was. So we decided that would be a good, potentially a good spot for me, so then we decided to pursue the avenue of going through the process and getting a permit, and hopefully, that would be my home, once it's all said and done, not etched in stone, as the financial burden of it may alter that.
Okay, so you came to own this property, you think, in May of last year?
Yes, it was around that time.
And so then, so then you applied for the building permit when?
Probably by the building permit this year.
In '25?
Not '25, last year, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, so it was last year.
Like, in the fall? I'm just trying to get an understanding of...
I think probably in the fall. I'm not 100% sure, though. I actually have to refer back to my aunt, because she's kind of leading me in this journey, so I'd have to ask her and get back to you on that.
Okay.
So, I mean, personally, we, I think as a board, we want to see additional, you know, building and growth and things, you know, where they're supposed to be, when they're properly permitted, all that stuff. However, you only put so much stuff in a pipe, right? So we've got to figure out, how much capacity do we have? And we won't really know that. We know, we believe, we've created some, that's otherwise we wouldn't spend a million-plus dollars on the INI project, right? But until we know how much capacity we have, we've got to be very judicious in how we move forward with these types of things. You know, making a decision tonight one way or the other, you know, is a possibility. Deferring the decision from tonight until sometime, maybe in the springtime, when we really know what we can do, is probably, in my opinion, potentially a more logical solution. But I totally understand your position with the costs, not ideal by any stretch. In your letter, you said that when I attempted to obtain the building permit, you were informed by the water and sewer department about this moratorium, which is a term we're not really supposed to be using, because it's not a formal moratorium, it's just that we know that we are capacity constrained, right? So I guess those are my thoughts. Any other comments for the board?
I have some, but I'll...
No, I'm kind of, I would tend to agree with you that it might make sense to push it to the spring, and I don't have a real clear understanding of how the timeline played out on this.
You'll like my answer much better in the spring than you'd like it tonight. I look at your timeline, and even though there's a lack of clarity on some parts of it, I think the knowledge of our sewer constraints is pretty well-founded in town, and I think it's something that you should have known, and should have been able, should have been knowable to you on May 1st, which is, I think, May 1st is the notes in here of when the first application went in, because it's been in effect for a lot longer than just one year that we've been constrained. That said, if you want to step back, come up with a little more history on when things happened, so we have a better understanding of that timeline, and at the same time, give us time to look for more data to tell us how much improvement we got, I'd be more interested in your case. Right now, I have a hard time seeing this as a hardship compared to the hardship of somebody who was told eight years ago, or seven years ago, that they could connect, or somebody whose septic system failed and had no property on which to build another septic system. So that's hard for me.
Say one more thing. I just want to give you a lot of credit, someone your age. I'm sorry, were you done? I'm sorry.
You say this, but I was thinking, I meant to say it, and I'm sorry, I didn't say it.
I really do. I have to give you a lot of credit to take on a project like this, you know, as a young guy coming into town, trying to do the right thing, trying to build, trying to grow. I give you a lot of credit, and I hope that when we see you again in the spring, we can give you a different, you know, give you a positive answer. I really do, because I want to see you succeed, and I hope you'll be able to build what you're trying to build, and I hope it's successful for you, I really do.
You said most of what I was going to say, but the one thing, no, I think, you know what? We don't get nicely written letters very often, and making a good case.
Between your letter and your presentation, you're probably the best we've had coming in front of us. This is a position that we don't often find ourselves in. We're supposed to be select board members, and all of a sudden tonight, we're like judges or something on a case. And it's, I think we all want to say yes, but, you know, until we know we can...
The facts of the sewer line, yeah.
Exactly. So we've got, and I'll have to defer to Mr. Noble, and we may have to get back to you separately, but we've got, you know, a meeting on May 27th, June 9th, June 23rd. I don't know how far into the spring we need to get before we know what kind of capacity we have year over year. So...
I get the distinct impression we will not, however, be forgotten by Jacob, so he'll be back.
Come and find us.
In terms of when we will have a more, like, some sort of feedback from...
I need some really good rainstorms that soak the ground, give us groundwater, that can challenge us to see the result. The interesting thing with the drought is I can tell you what the baseline is, what is truly sewage. So now we need to find out how much we're getting for inflow and infiltration, and that's what getting some heavy rainstorms will do.
And it's not just, you know, a heavy rainstorm is great, but all we need is, we need a heavy rainstorm that's, so the ground is soaked and saturated, and then a heavy rainstorm on top of that, so then we know, here's what happens with the INI. But, I mean, we're hopeful, we're optimistic, but we need to see data.
So I think tonight, if we're all in agreement, no action at this time, but as soon as we have a couple good rainstorms and we coordinate with Mr. Noble and DPW, let's get back together.
Stay in touch with me.
Or Water Department, rather.
Communication is key. That's the biggest thing. And then we can go from there.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, 6.8 vacancies on boards and committees.
So on the website and before you this evening is a list of all the boards and committees that have vacancies. Some of the vacancies are listed because the terms are expiring. That doesn't necessarily mean the incumbent may not, you know, may refile for reappointment, but it also means that the opportunity is there to serve on other committees and boards and/or submit. We are actually getting some applications, and these will be before you at the next meeting, so we'll want to arrange a time where they could come in and present to the board as well. There are openings right now on the Community Preservation Committee, Council on Aging, the Historical Commission, Keep Plainville Beautiful. The Cultural Council is in severe need of additional members. Open Space and Recreation Taxation Aid would like to remind the town that the Tri-County Regional School Committee seat, which is an appointment by the chairman of the board and the town moderator, is vacant as of June. So I'm sure that the incumbent will file for reappointment, but that is open for additional applicants. The Veterans District Advisory Board, there are two seats, not seers, each are one-year terms. There's a Veterans Memorial Committee, which I don't think is meeting, but we should really have them meet. I don't know if we should appoint people to a committee that doesn't meet. And the Zoning Board of Appeal has two associate members available.
I meant to ask this question about a topic earlier, when we were talking about the early in-person voting. Will we have a town, another town email blast on this and that, that we can also all share via social media?
I'd like to get as many applicants in for the next meeting, so that we can just start filling up our committees.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I understand why the Cultural Council has trouble staying full. It's a 22-member committee?
It can be up to 22 members, but right now, we're, we really need more members. It's a state-funded organization, it's, you're giving away money to cultural events, many very close and dear to our hearts. Consequently, it's an important role. I admit to you, it's not a huge amount of money, but it's an important task.
I would say, too, if I remember correctly, it's not a heavy lift being on that, because they only meet so many times in the year, and, I mean, I don't have all the details, but because I looked into it at one point, I think it's a pretty...
The biggest pressure's on the chairman, because the way the money comes out of the state is painful, so.
All right. Unless there's any other comments, we'll move to 6.9, insurance update.
Thank you. We have two updates for you. Fortunately, we negotiated with MIA, which is our property and casualty and professional liabilities policy, to renew, and we did that before California. We did that before California, so consequently, our increase is a modest 2.5%. This does not include workers' comp. Did have a bad year for workers' comp, so the mod factor's going to be adjusted up a little bit. But generally speaking, our overall policies are only going to rise 2.5%, which is great. We've locked that in. I don't want to talk about 27, but let's just talk about 26 and celebrate what we have for good news there. Consequently, we're signed, we're locked, we're bound. We also went through certain things, like, for example, our new DPW director is a professional engineer. We've basically, reviewing the policies, found that he's not covered for his professional certification, so we've added that to the policy and still did not overdo the budget, so very happy with that. So the negotiations went very well, and we'll be staying with MIA for another year, because I think they've been very good stewards and very good to the town, despite the number of car accidents that we've had recently, which go with the territory when you run town vehicles 24/7, 365. On health insurance, it's a little different story. We have all read in the newspapers about the increases in medical inflation, and we are not immune. Our loss ratio has been rather high. Everyone assumed that, yes, it would go up after COVID, but that it would level off. Hasn't. Consequently, our initial talk with renewing our ASO services with Blue Cross Blue Shield is reflecting about a 15% increase. So to give you a basic idea of size, the overall cost of the insurance policy will be in excess of a half a million dollar increase. A half a million dollars. Now, of course, that's split 25 to the employees, 75 to the town. That's still an exceptional amount of money. Combine that with Tri-County, try that with the change in the formula for the retirement for Norfolk County, this hurts. So, we'll be working with the Insurance Advisory Committee and the town employees to see what we can do to mitigate this. Some suggestions are already on the table, including increasing the town's incentive to the high deductible plan, to basically buy down the cost of the insurance policy for not only the employee, but for the town as well, by incentivizing them to, "Town will cover your deductible, take the lower cost option." It's always, and by the way, taking, personally, I take the high deductible plan, and it drives my wife insane when she has to pay, but we got the money from the town, we covered it. It's just that, you know, when you get stuck with a $400 bill, it's a surprise. So, we just have to do a little better education of our employees that they were, you know, given the incentive to do that, which goes, by the way, into the HSA plan, which is the Health Savings Account. This is a good deal for those of you at home that understand what an HSA is. You can spend it on any health expense, whether now or in the future after you retire, because it goes with you into retirement. It is triple tax exempt. It's tax exempt when the town gives you the money. It's tax exempt on the interest and investments that it makes during its lifetime, and it's tax exempt when you spend it. So, it's a very good deal for the employees. We need to do a better job explaining this. Right now, only 10% of the town employees take it. We're hoping to run that number up a little bit. We may go shopping for ASO services to see if we can bring the cost of town. Best way to describe this is the town is not insured by Blue Cross Blue Shield. They simply administer our plan. The town insures itself. Consequently, when we have high claims, we're running in a deficit. When we have lower claims, we're running in a surplus. If we run too much of a surplus, we are, we give it back to the employees as well as to the taxpayer. Unfortunately, right now, the bad story is, we're on high claims right now. And we certainly don't want to ever tell an employee not to go to the doctor, certainly don't want to be in that position, but when they go, our claims are high. So, consequently, we're having to watch this very carefully. We'll be meeting with the IAC projected right now. The tentative date is the 10th of March, and we'll present some options to them to see how we can both tackle this together.
All right, very good. Any questions on that? All right, now, we're going to backtrack up to, what was it, 6.1, a proclamation for Dennis Marqueur. Please.
Okay, whereas dedicated public service is worthy of recognition and celebration, particularly when an individual has served with distinction for four decades, and whereas Dennis Marqueur has demonstrated unwavering commitment, exceptional dedication, and outstanding service to our organization, beginning his career with the town of Plainville on September 23rd, 1985, as a laborer, transferred to the water and sewer foreman in 1989, and promoted to water and sewer division supervisor in 2023, and whereas throughout these 40 years, has consistently exhibited the highest standards of professionalism, integrity, and dedication to excellence in all endeavors, and whereas his wealth of knowledge, expertise, and institutional memory have proven invaluable to countless colleagues and projects throughout his tenure, and whereas he has served as a mentor, role model, and inspiration to generations of employees, exemplifying the values of hard work, perseverance, and dedication. Now, therefore, be it resolved, we, the select board of the town of Plainville, do hereby recognize and commend this outstanding employee for 40 years of exemplary service, and express our deepest gratitude for his invaluable contributions to our organization and community, proclaim Friday, February 14th, 2025, as Dennis R. Marqueur Day in the town of Plainville, and urge all residents and employees to join the select board in congratulating Dennis on an outstanding career with the town. And be it further resolved that this proclamation be presented as a token of our appreciation and esteem, with best wishes for continued success and years of happiness and good health in all future endeavors, given this 10th day of February in the year of our Lord, 2025.
Excellent. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Dennis, very much. It's an amazing accomplishment to work for 40 years, work the way up to see this.
Absolutely, absolutely. So it'll be, what, Happy Valentine's Day and Happy Dennis Marqueur Day.
Yep, that's right. Don't forget.
Take it away to dinner.
Excellent. All right, with that...
Make a motion to adjourn at 7:26 p.m.
Second it.
All those in favor? Did you have a comment on Dennis Marqueur?
I just wanted to say, for 40 years, you've been around town, and when you needed something, he was there. So, he has been at the town since the beginning.
Yes, he was always helpful.
Thank you. Motion in a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Plainville. Good night.